We ask for all these questions.
Alderman Shansett, would you give us the place of allegiance?
The place of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Yes, the city clerk, please call the roll.
Miller.
Here.
Rosado.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Knop.
Here.
Shansett.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Salvati.
Here.
O'Brien.
Callahan.
Here.
Meitzler.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
Uer.
Here.
Serone.
McFadden.
Let the record reflect that 11 of the 14 elected aldermen are present accounted for us. We have the necessary qualms to conduct business. Item four is the meeting reminder, which we do every meeting, and we ask that you please speak into the microphone for BATV because they are recording this, and if anybody comes up to the podium to address us, we specifically ask that they use the microphone because it becomes very hard for people in the TV world to listen to us if they're not speaking directly into that microphone. Moving to item number five, which are items to be removed, added, or changed on the agenda.
I'm aware of none, but I would encourage us to speak slowly because Alderman Serone is on his way.
He's on his way? Oh, okay.
Just gonna rush to number 13, that's all.
Serone.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
We have nothing then to...
Rosado.
Aye.
We have nothing to act on as item number five.
Beck.
Aye.
Knop.
Aye.
Motion's approved. Twelve yes, no, no's, two absent. So we will then move to item number six, which is presentation of tonight's consent Okay, moving to item number seven, which are matters from the public for items not agenda. on the agenda. Do we have anything this evening?
Your honor, the consent agenda reads as follows: Accept and place on file the 2018
All right, moving to item eight, which is a proclamation for Suicide Prevention Awareness
municipal compliance reports for the fire and police pension funds, the 2019 tax levy
Month. Does anybody have this?
requests for collection in 2020 for the fire and police pension funds, and July 19, 2019
You got it?
A proclamation. Whereas September is known around the United States as National Suicide city council financial report. Prevention Awareness Month, and is intended to out-promote awareness surrounding each For approvals, the August 23, 2019 payroll in the amount of $845,824.78, the accounts of the suicide prevention resources available to us and our community, the simple goal is to learn how to help those around us and how to talk about suicide without increasing payable check register in the amount of $1,224,552.73, the city council minutes from the risk of harm. And whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, August 19 of 2019, and for approval, a Class F liquor license request for the 10th anniversary income level, religion, or background, and whereas, according to the CDC, each year more celebration of Water Street Studios. Your honor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read. than 41,000 people die by suicide, and whereas, suicide is the 10th leading cause of death
Second. Moved by Alderman Shansett, second by Alderman Knop, for the approval of the consent agenda
among adults in the US and the 2nd leading cause of death among people aged 10 to 24.
as presented. Any discussion? Let the record reflect that Alderman Serone has just entered the proceedings.
And whereas Batavia, Illinois is no different than any other community in the country, but
Clerk, please call the roll.
chooses to publicly state and place our full support behind local educators, mental health
Shansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
professionals, athletic coaches, PAC leaders, police officers, and parents as partners
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
in supporting our community and simply being available to one another.
Aye.
Uer.
And whereas, local organizations like Suicide Prevention Services and national organizations like the National Alliance on Mental Illness are on the front lines of a battle that many still refuse to discuss in public, as suicide and mental illness remain too taboo a topic to speak on. And whereas, every member of our community should understand that as throughout life struggles, we all need the occasional reminder that we are all silently fighting our own battles. And whereas, I encourage all residents to take the time to inquire as to the well-being of their family, friends, and neighbors over the next few days, and to genuinely convey their appreciation for their existence by any gesture they deem appropriate. A simple phone call, message, handshake, or hug can go a long way towards helping someone realize that suicide is not the answer. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Schulke, Mayor of the City of Batavia, Illinois, do hereby proclaim September 2019 as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Batavia, Illinois, signed by Mayor Jeffrey D. Schulke. Your honor, I would move that we approve the proclamation as read.
Second. Moved by Alderman Shansett, second by Alderman Meitzler, for the approval of the proclamation. Any discussion? Clerk call the roll. Sorry, Alderman.
Yeah, I know Elliot had mentioned last time, people willing to share stories, and they are painful. An extended family member of mine committed suicide, and I think it's probably been 20 or more years now since that happened. And at that funeral, hearing the anguish from his mom is a sound I will never forget. I promise you that. And anybody out there that has these thoughts, please reach out to somebody, because the pain that is caused to family is... will never end. So I really wish that people would do what they can to seek help.
Alderman Shansett?
Recognizing the last year since we approved a proclamation, I lost someone to suicide in my own ward. I will also recognize the memory of a former partner of mine whose father was a Chicago Police Officer, took his own life, 25 years later affecting the entire family. It's something that we definitely do need to talk about, and I thank you for this proclamation.
Anybody else? What needed to say is, as the mayor, I've had a few of these situations myself with city employees, and you know, we... It is, like you say, it's an undescribable... Some of the lowest moments I've experienced as the mayor of this town when we've had to do that, I've spoken a couple of funerals and whatever have you, it is a terrible thing. Just really bad. Alderman Wolf, you?
Yeah, I wanted to say, you know, it's almost exactly five years ago that I lost my niece, my sister's oldest. And one of the things that happened after Anna died was, there was a really big struggle in my family to talk about it. So I... To me, the biggest thing is, reach out, find somebody you feel comfortable to talk to, and try to deal with what's happened, you know, especially in your own family. The other thing that comes to mind is, one of my child, one of my oldest child, one of her best friends from grade school on committed suicide about eight years ago. And one of the things that happened after it happened with Ben is there was a lot of talk in a lot of the schools and a lot of programs that happened. And one thing that really sticks with me was, what happens with, especially with kids, and I think anybody that commits suicide, they feel like there's no other way out. And the thing that was told to us at this, I think it was over at the middle school, was, "Look around the room, and the person that wants to commit suicide or the person that does die by suicide sees one door, sees one window, sees one way out." And the thing we have to remember and try to teach people, especially kids, is that just about every place you're in, there's more than one way out. And you know, we were in a gym, and everybody looked, and we were told to identify a door, and then remember, it's not just that door that's available to you. And it might take somebody else to unlock it, or somebody else to help you get through it, but there are other ways out. So I think that that's really important to remember, and you know, just the fact that take time and listen to somebody when they ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Alderman Wolf?
Yeah, I would... Thanks for bringing that up, Elliot, bringing it out, talking about it, it's very important. When I was 18, two of my brothers and I took another brother down from the Joyce in our basement. It was extremely painful. But I would add the most, and our families, you know, we've grown a lot since then, we've talked more about it, where we are, and this was when I was 18, so 30 some years ago. We are making huge advancements with mental health, but in all of that, the most difficult thing was knowing that the pain that my brother went through to lead to that. And so, the resources that we have available, we need to make sure people are aware that there is help out. It's not a... It's not taboo like it used to be. So I encourage you, reach out to people, but also if you're struggling yourself, reach out. It's, you know, there's other... There's other solutions. Thanks.
Anybody else? Clerk call the roll, please.
Shansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Knop.
Aye.
Motion for the Suicide Prevention Awareness Month proclamation is approved. Twelve yes, no, no's, two absent. Okay, moving to nine, which is the Batavia Chamber of Commerce, and we're honored to have Margaret Perro, the Executive Director, here. So, Margaret.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all for having me tonight. Good evening. I am the President and CEO of the Batavia Chamber, Margaret Perro. We are a member organization that supports all business growth and prosperity in the community. One of the ways that the Chamber does that is by celebrating ribbon-cutting ceremonies for our local businesses to celebrate either anniversaries, grand reopenings, openings, any sort of celebration we like to be a part of to celebrate business success in our town. So we have a couple coming up, some of these I'm sure you're well aware of. BEI's 60-year anniversary ribbon-cutting ceremony, the Chamber is going to support with the multi-chamber St. Charles and Geneva ribbon-cutting ceremony on September 5. Please join us, it's at 4:00 PM on First Street at BEI's building. We're also celebrating Water Street Studios' ribbon-cutting ceremony, their 10-year anniversary, on September 13 at 4:00 PM at their location on Water Street. We are doing a grand reopening for the Elder Day Center, which we're all very, very happy about. We will be hosting that, or celebrating with the ribbon-cutting ceremony at their event at 4:00 PM on September 19 on Wilson Street. We are also hosting a ribbon-cutting ceremony for a new business that recently joined the Chamber, they're professional organizers, the business name is Neat Life Design, and we'll be hosting that ribbon-cutting at noon at the Chamber office on September 27. Some other events that we're hosting, well, for details on any of those, please go to the bataviachamber.org website. But I wanted to mention a couple other events that we have coming up. We have our morning networking event, BC Squared, our Batavia Chamber Breakfast Club, that we will have at Comfort Inn at 7:30 AM on September 11. On September 12, we have our Batavia Women in Business After Hours Networking Event at Aqua Viva, that is at 5:00 PM. We have our evening networking that the Chamber hosts on the 3rd Wednesday of each month, on September 18, at My Place Hotel in North Aurora. That one, we will be supporting Marklund, as we partner with a charity each month to give them our support, so we'll be raising funds for them. And... Sorry, skip, lost my place. And one of our biggest events that's coming up, I'm happy to say, is our Harvest Celebration. That's our fall celebration for supporting businesses in the evening at Abbey Farms. It's called a Harvest Celebration, and at that ceremony, we give out our Donna De La Sassy Award. Donna De La Sassy was the Executive Director of the Batavia Chamber from 1983 to the year 2000, and we named our award after her because she did such a great job with promoting Batavia businesses. So this year, we're very honored to give that award to Holly Dietzmann. Holly was our Executive Director for the last five years. She really recently took a position at the Batavia Public Schools, but we would like to honor her for all the great dynamic networking and educational program... programming she added to the services of the Batavia Chamber. And the Chamber really has experienced unprecedented growth under Holly. So please join us, there's... We need registration for that event, so please go to bataviachamber.org and register, or call our phone number at the Chamber, 630-879-7134. Now, I am honored to introduce a new business that has joined the Chamber that is located on Shumway Avenue in Batavia. They are a broadcasting and media production company that has been featuring local stories in our town. So I would like to introduce Shumway Studio. Would you please come up, Ed Thad?
There we are. Go ahead.
Thanks, Margaret.
Well, welcome. Thank you for coming.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, everybody, for having us today. Just to introduce ourselves, we are Shumway Studio, and we are occupied at the 30 South Shumway, the old city hall, basically, on the 2nd floor. Now, there used to be a photography studio there facing west. In any event, just a little bit about ourselves, let me see if I can do this right. We're actually two companies. Thad and I have been in business together for a long time, operating under our own businesses. I live here in Batavia, I have for about 16 years or more. Under Wide Eye Productions, Thad's company, is Greentown Productions, but we do so much work together that we've always toyed with the notion of having office space where we could work together, collaborate together, and maybe do some projects outside of what we typically do on our normal client base. And our normal client base is typically a lot of corporate clients, a lot of corporate media production that you might see on their YouTube pages and so forth, or internal media for live events and so forth, and we're traveling much of the time to various companies around the nation, sometimes overseas. So we decided in December to get a space that became open to us, and there we became Shumway Studio, where we consider ourselves a full-service media production company, telling impactful stories for businesses. And we can do small projects to, you know, small shops, down to, up to Fortune 500 companies, and have the ability to scale through our resources of other creative professionals. And one of the things we wanted to do, I'll let Thad jump in anytime here, is...
Oh, you're good, Ed.
No, thank you.
You're good.
Well, since we do have a space in Batavia and do have a Batavia presence, not so much that we have a storefront that you walk into, but our spaces, where we work, we collaborate, we edit, and so forth when we are in town, but we figured since we're in town and we like to, what we consider our corporate media work as almost corporate documentary, we also like to create side projects. So if we see things that interest us, and we have the time to do it to fit into our schedule, we thought, well, this would be a great way to tell local stories. So that's one thing that we do do, is tell some local stories. And a couple that you may have seen around the Christmas period was about the Peace Bridge and the letters that go on the bridge every year, and it happened to fall right around the time that we were getting our space, and we put it up on Facebook, and that garnered us about 80,000 views and about 1,400 or more shares. So it was really a nice... It got spread out nicely in the community, and that made us feel pretty good, but...
And that was interesting, because it was just a personal story. Ed lives here in Batavia, I'm trying to get to Batavia. I'm trying to get there. I'm almost convinced the wife to move here, but it's a story that Ed has talked about for a long time, and he always wondered how those letters got on that bridge, and he thought it would make a compelling story. I don't think he realized how compelling a story it would be. We literally walked off the street into the barber shop of the person that kind of...
Craig Foltos, right? Yes, in fact, this might be a good time just to do that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And it was just very amazing how it all fell together, but these are the kind of personal stories. No one commissioned us to do this, we felt compelled by the stories and the people that we see in this, in this great village, so you take it from there, sir.
Right, right. So that was one story we told, and if you'd indulge us, we've actually, there is a full version online, you can check our website or Freyspick page, but we have compressed a one-minute version down. If you haven't seen it or want to see a piece of it again, at least you give a taste, and I hope this works. Oh, here we go.
I'm a visual person. When I was growing up, Leonardo da Vinci idol, he's a visual person.
Listen really closely.
When I saw the bridge, and I saw this beautiful backdrop, that 20,000 people drive by this street every day, and they got to look at something, they might as well look at something that goes... When I first heard about the letters, I was actually anticipating like maybe a four-by-eight sheet of plywood, no big deal. Then Craig showed up to the shop and said, "Some assembly required." I like to call the guys, the Peace on Earth angels that install them, because we got it down to a science now. I like to live in a town where I know people care about each other. You know, it's not a place, it's not a sign, it's just the thing that's in you.
So that was the much-compressed version of the video that exists online. And then the other one was during the community table event held by Batavia Main Street. We were asked, they were making a table that they're not raffling off, but auctioning off, and we followed the story. This is an interesting story about a nice dinner table, it was an appropriate place, I think, to do this auction, where home builder Mike Spillane, right there in that image, handcrafted a table with the help of Batavia Foundry, where they forged some aluminum legs with a very industrial, very, very fitting to the history of the town, and all made in Batavia from a tree that was taken down from one of his homes that he remodeled here in Batavia. So it was all within, literally, a three-block area that this table was created. It was a really beautiful table, so small piece right here.
This video's louder.
This video's louder, so let's see what happens here. If I can... My name is Mike Spillane, I'm a home builder and remodeler. I live in Batavia, pretty much a lifelong resident. I've been involved with Batavia Main Street for a long time. I thought it would be neat that we could make a table for them to auction off in order to raise funds for the Batavia Food Pantry. I wanted to have an industrial kind of looking leg, so I went to my friends at Batavia Foundry and said, "Hey, I want to make this leg, how can you help me do that?" Batavia Foundry's been around since the early 20s. Our grandfather started the company, been around the foundry since I was a little kid. It's real special. Well, Mike had a design in mind. The legs, I think, are unique, they're different, you just don't see that. I do have pride in the fact that we've made something. Oh, I think the table will last many years to come and probably outlast you and I together. So those are two short examples, and we'd certainly like to do more. In fact, we're working on, actually, right now with the Energy City Brewing people, we're doing a video for them right now that we're anxious to tell, and hopefully, we can, we've got most of it shot, but we know we have to interview them, and that's something we think that the, it's a good story for the community, I believe, and hopefully others agree with that as well. So that's something that we're working on. And although it doesn't have our contact information there, again, we are at 30 South Shumway Avenue on the 2nd floor, and shumwaystudio.com is our website, or on Facebook, you can find us at Shumway Studio, not Studios, but Studio, Shumway Studio. And so you can find us there, see some of our work, or contact us. And that's essentially who we are, and we're pleased to tell you a little bit about us. I don't know if you do questions, or what happens at this point, but glad to share the time with you.
Anybody have any questions? You know, I just want to make a couple of suggestions to you for stories.
Please. Buckle up.
We hear you're a history buff.
Yeah, we're, the street you were on, who you've named your studio after.
Yes.
That's very interesting. The Shumway family had a foundry down at the end of the street, where, right across the street from where we built the new wastewater treatment plant that's about to be visited by us all, and great appreciation for what we've done down there. But anyway, when the Shumways were down there, they began operation in 1872, and I think they stayed till 2003 or something like that. So they were there like 133 years or something, long time. I forget the, I can look it up. But while they were there, one of the events that took place there was, is that they got contracted by some folks from California who told them they wanted to make an award to give away motion pictures.
Just a little award.
And so the Academy Award, the original patterns for that were made at Shumway Foundry.
We heard that, but didn't know the extent of it.
Yeah, there's, I've got some written materials, I couldn't put it out, my hands on it right now, I can find it, but there is, several of the descendants of the family still live in town, and it's a proud moment in Batavia when you consider that the Academy Award was there. Then out on, I was talking to Alderman Callahan about this before the meeting started, we've got some vacant land out on Walnut Street, just west of Harrison. And on that used to be a greenhouse that was owned and operated for many, many years by a Batavia family by the name of Psychora. And if you go out there today, there's a, there's a pathway, there used to be a railroad right-of-way that I would give Alderman Wolf a lot of credit for, for building a sidewalk on, because it goes right next to Augustuson School down there to the south, and when we were doing neighborhood sidewalks, Alderman Wolf came up with the idea, he wanted to build a sidewalk on that railroad right-of-way, so all the kids in that neighborhood have this off-the-street safe sidewalk that they can ride to school. It's a great use for it. Anyway, that used to be a railroad right-of-way. So when it was a railroad right-of-way, the Psychoras got quite a reputation for growing flowers, and I mean seriously, growing flowers of rare breeds and varieties and whatever have you. At some point, they can, were contacted by the folks putting together the Rose Bowl Parade in Pasadena, and for several years, a lot of the flowers that were used on the floats in the Rose Bowl Parade were grown on Walnut Street in Batavia. They would load those flowers onto railroad cars, take them down to Aurora on the old railroad right-of-way that used to go over the Toll Road and through Moose Hard and everything else, and they'd put that car on the Burlington Route, and then they'd just whip it off to California, and they'd get it to Pasadena, and they'd run in there and grab those flowers and put it out. So on Walnut Street in Batavia, we got the Rose Bowl Parade, and on Shumway Avenue in downtown Batavia, we got the Academy Award. And I think those are two very unique situations, and I, right now, we are in process of conversations with, some folks are trying to buy the old greenhouse on Walnut Street, the land, the greenhouse is gone, and redevelop it as a kind of a small residential subdivision. I was just, again, talking to Alderman Callahan about this. And one of the things I've told everybody that comes in, I said, you know, "You can do this, I think the city's probably going to be supportive of it, but the one thing we are going to ask is, is that we plaque this subdivision with a plaque that says, 'On this site was grown the flowers for the Rose Bowl Parade.'" And I think that's a memory for this town and a piece of history that needs to be recorded and live on. And the same is true with the Shumway Foundry site down here, that we need to plaque that as a site where the Academy Award, at least the patterns were made. So we've got some very unique stories in Batavia, kind of along the lines of which you've already illustrated here. We may have more than any other town around here, and I'm bragging now, but I mean, we really do have, we really do have some, and it goes way beyond the two stories I just told you of, stuff that's not just local, but in the case of the Academy Award and the, you know, the Rose Bowl Parade, you're talking nationally recognized activities. And so here we are.
Thanks for sharing those with us, especially the Foundry, because we've had family members contact, "Are you a Shumway?" We're like, "No, we're located on Shumway Avenue," but so hopefully, but everyone's been very good about it, and hopefully we can, you know, carry on some sort of honor to them. But no, I love this, I love the stories, and we're certainly, you know, that's stuff we really enjoy. Yeah, we eat that up.
Yes. Alderman Callahan?
Yeah, I just got to say, I've seen both yours videos that you've done, shared both of them, and I think they are just amazing. They are just kind of like a national caliber, where it makes you really proud to go, "Wow, that's amazing that that was filmed in our community." So with all these other stories that we have, I almost feel sorry for some of the surrounding ones that were going to look so much better.
Well, if it wasn't for... I mean, with our, with our client work, we wish we had more time to do a lot of these, and so, but we try to make as much time as we can.
But thank you very much for those comments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all for having us.
Yes, thank you very much.
Welcome to Batavia, wish you many years of business growth and success.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll eject this thing and then get it out of there. Let me see if I can do this. I'm sorry, everybody, there we go. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving to item number 10 on the agenda, which is ordinance 19-058, an ordinance authorizing the City of Batavia, Canton, DuPage Counties to issue water revenue bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $1 million, and evidence of loans issued pursuant to the Public Water Supply and Loan Program. Who's got this one?
I'll take this, Your Honor. So the next two, 10 and 11, are tied together. The first is an ordinance, 1958 is an ordinance, and 1095 is a, R is a resolution. So we've been in the process of replacing water mains in conjunction with stormwater and sanitary... of them, and I think they are just amazing. They are just kind of like a national caliber, where it makes you really proud to go, "Wow, that's amazing that that was filmed in our community." So with all these other stories that we have, I almost feel sorry for some of the surrounding ones that were going to look so much better.
Well, if it wasn't for, I mean, with our, with our client work, we wish we had more time to do a lot of these. And so, but we try to make as much time as we can.
But thank you very much for those comments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all for having us.
Yes, thank you very much.
Welcome to Batavia. Wish you many years of business growth and success.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll eject this thing and then get it out of there. Let me see if I can do this. I'm sorry, everybody. There we go. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving to item number 10 on the agenda, which is ordinance 19-058, an ordinance authorizing the city of Batavia, Canton, DuPage Counties to issue water revenue bonds in an aggregate, aggregate principal amount not to exceed $1 million in evidence of loans issued pursuant to the Public Water Supply Loan Program. Who's got this one?
I'll take this, Your Honor. So the, the next two, 10, 11 are tied together. The first is an ordinance, 1958 is an ordinance, and 1095 is a R, is a resolution. So we've been in the process of replacing water mains in conjunction with stormwater and sanitary sewer replacement, Area 3 and Ward 1 of the city. We, as a council, made the decision in late 2017 to issue bonds for the storm and sanitary work, and to complete it in a shorter time period. At the time, there was not a discussion of the water mains, or if they would be replaced in conjunction with storm and sanitary work. The Public Works Department came to the decision that the water main should be replaced at the same time, to avoid having to tear up new roads since the water main is aging. So these sections are, were not on the current list of water mains due for replacement due to the lack of funds, and overall water main replacements needed. With the county project at Kirk and Fabian this year, and Main Street and Prairie Street projects next year, the water fund doesn't have enough funds to complete all the work. Therefore, so the water fund is applying for an IEPA loan for the 2020 portion of the work related to the project. Bond Council's prepared bond ordinance 1958, which authorizes an ordinance allowing for the borrowing of up to $1 million in low, in low-interest loan funds from the Public Water Supply Loan Program. A final bond ordinance will be prepared in 2020 after the new, the new, the first draw on the loan is received. There are sufficient revenues to cover the repayment for this IEPA loan, but there will be further rate increases proposed to cover future capital needs. And there will likely be another borrowing as well for the 2020 work that does not qualify for IEPA funding. And this will come at a later date. So I know we went through this at COW, and it was, it was passed along. Do any other questions on this? If there are none, I make the motion that we approve ordinance 1958 to authorize the city of Batavia, Canton, DuPage Counties to issue Water Works Revenue Bonds in an aggregate principal not to exceed $1 million in evidence of loans issued pursuant to the Public Water Supply Loan Program.
Second. Moved by Alderman Salvati, Second Alderman Wolf, for the approval of ordinance 19-058 for the water revenue bonds. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf? I'm sorry, Salvati?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Ordinance 19-058 is approved, 12 yes, no no's, 2 absents. Moving to 11, which is Resolution 19-095-R, authorizing representative to sign loan documents. Who's got this one?
That's me. That's tied right, right to this one. So, and this, again, this is just authorizing the signer for these documents. Any questions on this? If none, I will make the motion that we approve Resolution 19-095-R, authorizing the signer for the IEPA loan documents for this.
Second. Moved by Alderman Salvati, Second Alderman Euer, for the approval of Resolution 19-095-R, a representative to sign the loan documents. Any discussion?
I'm just, just curious, do we, do we get a rate yet?
This year is 1.7.
Good question, good rate.
Fantastic, great. Of course, they all look like that.
Any other comments? Kirk call the roll.
Salvati?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Resolution 19-095-R is approved, 12 yes, no no's, 2 absents. Moving to 12, which is Resolution 19-098-R, authorizing execution of Task Order 16 with Energy Engineering Enterprises Incorporated for Carriage Crest Recharge Basin Dewatering Well Analysis. Who's got this one?
I do, Your Honor.
Alderman Wolf?
Thank you. This is, comes out of our committee hall meeting. That staff would recommend that we approve this. It's for a dewatering well analysis carriage crest recharge basin, which is, I'll call it a mini lake that we've had for years that needs to be re-engineered and figure out how to keep the water level down in it so it doesn't back up into the adjacent housing lots that are there, or houses that are there. So this is something that we've talked about for a long time, and now we're going to fix it, figure out how to fix it.
Alderman Metzler?
I would just say, I know that I received many contact in the springtime, and I'm certainly glad to see this one come to us and hope that everyone can support us moving forward.
Alderman Chanset?
And on behalf of the residents who lose sleep every time they see a cloud in the sky, I am ecstatic that we're moving forward on this.
And I'll chime in and say, "I join you two in saying..."
I'm glad we're going to figure out a solution to this. We've talked about this the entire time I've been on the city council, so. Been a long time.
Anybody else on that one? Kirk call the roll.
I need a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 19-98-R, authorizing execution of Task Order Number 16 with Engineering Enterprises for Carriage Crest Recharge Basin Dewatering Well Analysis.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, Second Alderman Metzler, for the approval of Resolution 19-098-R for the Carriage Crest Recharge Basin Dewatering Well Analysis. Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Motion's approved, 12 yes, no no's, 2 absents. All right, moving to 13. Resolution 19-092-R, approve and amend Resolution 19-092, adopting a city of Batavia logo design with color and font decided at city council. Who's got, who wants to bring this one up? Alderman Chanset?
This is allegedly my committee. I was, I was, I was in Toronto studying marijuana, as you'll remember. Very appropriate. I did watch the meeting. I would say I will pass this on to the chair of that meeting, but I guess I would also make remarks after watching the debate. For something as big as this, I feel like, had I been there, I would have said something to the effect of, "This needs to stay in committee," because for the mayor to break a tie on something as, we're changing the logo, the, the mark. I mean, we've had discussions about, you know, the marketing campaign that goes with it, the branding that goes with it, that, that's all part of it. But the logo itself, we are limping into this if we are split six to six. And it just feels like that the council has no business discussing this tonight, that the committee really should be, should be reviewing this. And if the instructions are to have Griffin go back with more designs, great. We need to give him some instruction on what to do. But to approve this tonight would be contrary, we are, we are better than this, is, is what I, was what I would have said. So I would make a motion to table it and send it back to committee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second, and a motion to table takes precedent, correct? We have a motion and second. I guess ask Kirk to call the roll.
Can I make a comment?
Do we make comments on? I know there's some, I don't think, that's the reason, that's the reason I'm doing it. I've had this discussion up here with them before.
I certainly wouldn't object to hearing comments if it's important to withdraw the motion to table. I don't want to monopolize this.
It's not to withdraw. It's supporting it, but it's not, it's not.
Okay.
All right, Kirk call the roll then, and a motion to table.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
No.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Well, the motion to the table is approved, 11 yes, 1 no, 2 absents.
If I could just make a quick comment. And, and it was ironic that the, the guys from Shumway Studio were here tonight. How did everyone feel when they saw the two videos that they put together?
It's very good.
They're amazing.
They nailed it.
Nailed it. Absolutely, right? You knew it when you saw it. It's not with this logo. It's not with this logo. And that's, and that's, again, I'm not, I don't want to take anything away, but that, you, you just know it when you see it. And I think we just need to go back and we need to work as a team at, at committee, and, and come back and hammer this thing out. And it'll get done. And I know, Nick, you've got concerns of it being in perpetual, you know, purgatory.
My vote didn't matter.
Logo purgatory.
I'm all for giving it a try.
It's, and, and it's legit.
It's always worth giving it a shot. I am a little cynical, but I'd rather try.
And it deserved, and deservedly. Absolutely, absolutely.
And I hope I'm wrong.
I think we're doing the right thing. And I, you know, I, but I think what needs to happen is, I think there needs, needs to be a concerted effort at committee level with Griffin running point, and, you know, and, and really coming back together. And, and something that really, we go, "Yeah, that absolutely is worthy of us voting unanimously on." My two cents.
So at this point, the motion is tabled, which means there is no direction to staff to do anything at this point. So shall we wait until such time as city council directs us to take another look at this? Is that, is that where we're at?
Probably should discuss this in committee and decide what direction we want to take. That makes the most sense.
Make a discussion?
Yeah.
Okay.
But, but keep it active. I don't want to sit on this. I mean, it, you know.
Entryway signs.
And we got an entryway sign.
They're falling apart.
That need to be done. We need to.
They're really gross.
Budget discussions. I mean, we have to do this. Got tchotchkes. Yeah.
Okay, you got your direction.
Okay, sounds good.
You're on now under Administrator's Report.
Administrator's Report. Okay, just a reminder to everyone that because we had the holiday yesterday, that the garbage pickup is one day delayed. I also wanted to point out, since September has now been designated as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month here in the city of Batavia, many mentioned that there, people need a place where they can reach out to when they only see one way out. And I want to applaud everyone, and also our, our United Way and our school district for creating 211. You know, that's the three, three numbers that you have to remember, and they're associated with 911. It makes it incredibly easy to remember. And it's just if you need someone to talk to, and, and, you know, they can steer you in the right direction. It's a great first step when you don't know what kind of step to take. So I encourage everybody to utilize that resource. And then also, the harvest celebration that the Chamber of Commerce was talking about, you know, they've got two really signature events in our city. One are the Inspire Awards at which the Citizen of the Year is designated, and as well, there are awards provided to businesses that have reinvested in themselves and done some fantastic work. But the other one is the Harvest Celebration, and I encourage anybody who is available to go to that, it's a great opportunity to meet the business people in this community. The Chamber of Commerce has nearly 500 member businesses, and it'd be a great way to celebrate the Holly Deitchman and the accomplishments that she made while she was president and CEO of the Batavia Chamber of Commerce.
And that's almost doubling, that was almost doubled under her.
Yes, yes, it certainly was. And then all of the, in addition to increasing the membership, as Margaret was saying, the different types of programming that she brought online to the organization as well are just, just incredible and such a wonderful resource, as they were saying, to ensure the prosperity of the businesses in our community. Also, people probably saw in the news over the weekend that the Homestead was in the, the news media for, there were four residents of the Covenant Living at Homestead in Batavia that were confirmed to have contracted Legionnaires' disease. The matter is still being studied by the Illinois Department of Public Health as to what the origin of how those people became infected, and the outbreaks, that we don't have any reason to believe that it affects the public water system here in Batavia. You know, just to let you know that we draw our public water supply from both shallow and deep wells, and part of our treatment process includes the addition of chlorine. And it is just this year that the state increased the requirement for the application of chlorine in public water from 0.2 parts per million to 0.5 parts per million. As luck would have it, last week, we were actually out testing the public water lines that feed Homestead, and it was determined that the levels were actually at 0.9 parts per million out there, well above the state standard. Another thing that Batavia has to protect our public water supply, and cases such as this, where a, a private system might in some way be jeopardized, is that we, the city enforces the state's requirement to have what's called a cross-containment control device, a CCCD, or a backflow device. And a CCCD prevents water from flowing backwards, back into, from a private property service, back into the public water supply. Each year, private property owners are required to test their system with a licensed plumber who has to inspect and send us certification that that is indeed still working. And the city is extremely aggressive in its enforcement of the annual backflow checks. And so, although the source of the Legionella bacterium in this case has not yet been identified, it's a situation that demonstrates, well, why the city has to be so vigilant in this regard. Does anybody have any questions about this particular situation? Okay. I also wanted to let everyone know, we're going to have some upcoming tours of the wastewater treatment facility now that construction has been concluded, all of the new equipment has been installed. Our employees have moved back, have moved into their new workspaces. Sometime within the next month, we will be having a committee of the whole meeting and go over there for an open house, as well as some public open houses as well, because I think it's really important to share with the community what a terrific investment that was. It was prompted by a change in regulations that required us to update the phosphorus treatment that we applied. But as well, there was a number of pieces of equipment who were coming to the end of their life, and it offered us the opportunity to, to replace those before they failed, and also to install processes which will increase our efficiency, and also help us to save some money in, in the process as well. In Public Works, the final landscaping is underway at the Mahoney Creek Stream Bank Restoration Project. There are three streets that remain to be resurfaced as part of the 2019 roadway project, and all work, including landscape restorations, is expected to be completed by the end of September. Storm sewer and sanitary sewer and water main construction all continue in Area 3. And last week, we received a new bucket truck for the Public Properties Division. It arrived last week and will be placed into service ASAP. IDOT sent a representative to do a visual inspection of the road closure areas that we are considering in the North River Street area. So their review of our request is, is being processed. And then also, just to let everybody know, that the Batavia Environmental Commission organizes several volunteer events to do brush cleanups, riverbank cleanups, and they made a request for the city to purchase some tools for the volunteers to use in those efforts. And so last week, we purchased those tools. And then we were, had kind of a conundrum of, where are we going to store these things? And luckily, our friends at Suncast Corporation, Batavia's largest employer, agreed to donate a shed that we can keep in our downtown area so we can keep those tools locked up, but that our Batavia Environmental Commission will have easy access to. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions at all? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, committee reports, community development?
We have nothing for tomorrow night. The plan commission for this Wednesday is canceled. The next one is September 18th. On Monday is historic preservation, fence installation at an address, window and door replacement. And Water Street Studios will be discussing a mural installation.
City services, Alderman Wolf?
We have, on the agenda next Tuesday, would be continuing the community conversation on the opioid crisis. And I think that's it.
Okay. Government services, Alderman Chanset?
Something about a logo? No, nothing on the, nothing to report.
And public utilities?
I got it. Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. All right, we have other business to come before the council? Alderman Chanset?
Nope, it's go Callahan.
What? Right.
Something about a logo? No, nothing, I mean, nothing to report.
And public utilities?
I got it. Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. All right, we have other business to come before the council? Alderman Chanset?
Nope, it's still Callahan.
What, crying?
Working hard.
Why don't you guys just switch?
He's got the power to rename us, I guess.
Unless ten of you disagree.
I just wanted to, I know this is not an Illinois matter or even a local matter, but a friend of mine, her stepfather passed, he was New York Senator Bill Larkin, he is, he was one of the last World War II veterans to serve. He joined at the age of 16, and he fought in World War II, and he fought in Korea, and he dedicated his life to public service, so, he was one of the people that in politics in this day and jaded area, he was a stalwart for veterans' rights, veterans' benefits, he, he represented the West Point area, so it was clearly in his blood, and he was one of the few people in politics that was a gentleman before a politician, so.
Thank you. Good, you made it to the end, those are the types of things we like to bring up and let everybody understand who's living here and what our connections are, and as we talked earlier in the meeting, we got a lot of unique, kind of nationally-connected experiences floating around Batavia.
He helped create the, in Cornwall, the National Purple Heart location, so I'm sure you've heard of that, so.
Anybody else? Okay, just under the mayor's report, very quickly, as most of you may have heard, we had a power outage this morning over on the east side, and it appeared, I met up with Chief Dyke, and he and I went out and rode the town shortly after it happened, and we had the 300 block of North Van Buren Street about two houses away from where our city clerk lives, was one of the strike areas, and then following the, kind of a straight, it was almost to be, appeared to be a kind of, some kind of a straight line event, maybe with wind, and we've had these before, we've had several recently, and it hit the 300 block of, of North Van Buren, tore out some electric lines and dropped some tree limbs and blocked the street, and so, our public works, the street department was quickly there to clean up the mess, and our, certainly our city electricians were up there trying to get the wire back in the air and get the power restored, because we had a wide area of the east side that didn't have power this morning for about an hour. Then this same line went two blocks to the east, and in the 300 block of North College Street, it hit again, and it did some damage around the backyard of, of the late Alderman Schmitz's house at Franklin and College, and then it dropped some lines there, and we had the fire department and the city electricians out there. It's amazing, as I think about it, the number of times we've had these kind of straight-line things happen. We had one last year that, I would suggest was one of the events that tore the windmill top off of here, and it was in a kind of heading in the northeast direction, and it went over on the east side and dropped some trees at different locations, and it ended up out at Kirk Road there by the entrance to the baseball field and tore a bunch of the roof off the church out there at the corner. So, we do have these with some regularity and nothing you can do about it, but it, this one this morning was, you could see, it was, the line was very dynamic and it just went right through there, and I don't know, maybe it was 110 mile an hour wind that was a little, maybe 200 feet wide or 100 feet wide, and it just, whenever it hit, it just tore the heck out of it, so, that's what happened there. And so, when I'm, we're out there looking around and whatever, I had several residents right away come up and tell me how great they thought the Batavia, City of Batavia Public Works Department was and the fire department, because 911 and within a minute or two, everybody was there and got the streets secured, nobody stepped on it, and people were worried about people being out and driving on the wires and all this, and we took great care of it, so I got a lot of compliments from our city staff then. Then I wanted to share with you, over the weekend, we had our first football game of the year, and Alderman Wolf can tell us a lot more about that if he chose to, but, anyway, we, we had some issues out there, we had a situation where we had some people get a little bit out of hand, and the Batavia police had to step in and, and get some people calmed down, and we had an ambulance call as a result of it and some other stuff. But I had a number of people, needless to say, in the community who were there at the game, saw some of this going on, and there was, it involved some younger people, so there was some degree of concern and sensitivity, but in a world that we all turn on the TV news every night and it's some police department in this area is being sued or chastised or picketed or whatever have you because of their activities or how they did or didn't handle something, I had that one, and then I had some people call and say that they were out on Main Street during the football game and some of this activity ended up over there, and how professional they thought it was all handled by the Batavia police, and they sealed off the street and got everybody all taken care of and whatever have you. So, I've had two different occasions here in just the last few hours where people have been very complimentary to the Batavia police, and I got to tell you, go talk to other mayors in the region, and most of them are just, you know, sweating it out about their police departments and what people are saying about it. Now, I'm, I'm just very, I'm almost sitting here feeling very blessed that we've got the police department, we do, because we seem to do stuff the right way and people do appreciate the way things are being handled. And I have people say to me, I just love it when I'm in Batavia because I can't drive very far, that I don't see one of them black and white cars. They're all over the place, and I'm glad they're all over the place because, you know, needless to say, there's probably people moseying around in here thinking they're going to do something or steal something or whatever have you, and they see all them cars driving around and they think, whoa, this may be not the most easiest place to go shopping for items in a open garage door, so I better go to another town someplace. I mean, I think that's great stuff, that we've got such a high-visibility police department that's always on the move, always out there, both sides of town, Randall Road, Kirk Road, we're all over the place. So, I'm just tooting our own horn here a little bit because, you know, as we get into the budget and everything else, I don't know, I don't think they're asking for anything significant, either one of them, but I just wanted to share that, you know, between the fire and police and the public works, we are really, really lucky in this town to have the people we do and the leaders that we have and heads of those agencies, because they are doing an outstanding job for us, and we should be very, very pleased with what's going on here. I don't, I've lived here all my life, as you know, and I don't know if I've ever remembered a time when people have held the city services in as high esteem as they seem to hold it now, and I just appreciate everything that's being done. So, no other business, I entertain a motion for Alderman Metzler?
Just to echo that statement of it, that same varsity game I happened to be at because my youngest daughter was one of the dancers, the cheer camp that was going through, so we were standing on the north end as two youths came, two yutes, two yutes, came charging through, trying to make a quick escape, and the police officer that was in pursuit didn't knock anyone over, didn't make it anything awkward, but he did not let them escape on foot, and he ran them down, and that was impressive. So, just to echo that further.
You were more graphic than I was, I heard that story, but I just wanted to share that, but I appreciate you doing that, but, I mean, when you're at a Batavia High School football game these days, as Alderman Wolf can attest to, you get a great crowd, I mean, big crowd, there's...
And that was, that was one of the bigger ones we've had, I mean, the only thing that really compares to that would either be a couple of the playoff games or a Geneva game.
There had to be a couple thousand people out there, I would think.
Definitely, I mean, when the, when the ring around the outside of the stadium fills up after the visitor stands fills up, that's a lot of people in that area, and I know that that becomes an issue for public safety. I mean, that becomes something that they have to really watch, and I didn't see, other than the flashing lights coming in real quietly on the east side, I didn't see any of it. I was busy watching.
There was a lot of people like Alderman Metzler who had their eye on it.
Yeah, right, right there involved in it, I'm sure.
It's, it's out there in town, I, Sunday morning, I went in McDonald's and I immediately heard about it, I mean, it was instantaneous, so, I mean, and I'm very proud of those folks because we do some great things in this town and nobody ever, and I guess that's the way it should be, and, you know, with the HIPAA law now, we can't even, if we send an ambulance to pick anybody up, we can't even admit, I don't think that we sent the ambulance, and we certainly can't say what we were doing with them and what their problem was, it's all, and it's probably the way it should be, but there's a lot of stuff that happens that nobody reads in the paper or hears anything about, and maybe somebody goes on the computer on Facebook and makes some suggestion about it, maybe they are, maybe they aren't right or wrong, but it's out there, but, so as a result, we're kind of in an information void era when it comes to ambulance and rescues and whatever have you, but we, we certainly do, are extremely well-served, and I'm very proud of those folks. No other business? Somebody want to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Savadi, second by Alderman Wolf for adjournment, Kirk take a voice vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Please, man.
Wow. Horse. Scary. Me.